Going to appeals is now in session.
Just so that everybody's aware, the meeting is being recorded.
Thomas Pope?
Thomas Pope is here.
Ralph Lofton?
Ralph Lofton is here.
Robert Levine?
Levine is here.
Tom Golden?
Tom Golden is here.
Paul Draper is here. I'm going to ask the clerk to read the legal ad. Tom Golden will read the major portions of the ad that was published.
Notice is here by giving that the zoning board appeals to hold a virtual public meeting on July 28th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Please see below on how to participate virtually. Public participation will be via virtual means only. The petition. This is an administrative appeal of a zoning denial letter from the Marlborough Building Commissioner dated April 15th, 2020, denying the applicant Theodore Evangelist. Theodore Evangelist's proposed roofing company contracted yacht use at 75 Lincoln Street, Marlborough. For failure to comply with chapter 650-16B, 650-17 of the city code as the use is not an allowed use. Proposed roofing company use is pre-existing non-conforming. The property is in Residence B zoning district. For further assistance, please contact the board at 508-460-3768. All interested persons are invited to the virtual meeting. Applicant or representative must be present.
Do we have any representative of the applicant or the applicant himself here? Please identify yourself and every time you speak, we can give you a name and address for the clerk. Anyone here?
So my name is-
Advocate?
My name is Christopher Flood. Can I first verify that everybody can hear me?
Hold it louder if you could.
My name is Christopher Flood. And I'm an attorney and I represent Ted Evangelist, Theodore Evangelist. Can everyone hear me okay?
They hear you fine.
Okay. Um, so. I'm going to be representing Mr. Evangelist in this hearing. Mr. Evangelist is also on. I saw his picture a few minutes ago. He's here somewhere. And then we also have Jonathan Chase. Mr. Chase is the current owner of 75 Lincoln Street and may request to speak for a few minutes when I'm done. I did submit with the application a memorandum giving an outline of our request to you tonight, which I'll give a quick summary of. So 75 Lincoln Street is in between East Main Street and Bolton Street. And it's the current home of Skin and Bones, which is Mr. Chase's business. The property has been used as a business since about 1915 to 1920. It was the family home of Marlborough Attorney Sandra Rennie Austin. Some of, she may have come across some of you in the past. Her great-grandfather, Albert James, ran a blacksmith shop from that time. The business continued in the family throughout, uh, from the 1915 to about 1980. Her grandfather ran the business, excuse me, her great-grandfather ran the business thereafter. Her father took over. Her grandfather took over and then her father took over when he returned from World War II. His name was Robert Rennie. And he ran the business as a blacksmith shop, also expanding to own the company called Yankee Fence. Uh, some of you that Marlborough natives may remember Yankee Fence at that location. In 1980, a gentleman named Victor McAdams purchased the property and continued to run the business Yankee Fence until about 1986. And at that time, it was sold to Matthew and Mark Evangelist, who operated Gemini Sign out of that location for about 20 years. Uh, in 2005, the building was sold to the current owner, Jonathan Chase. And Mr. Chase has continued to use the property for his custom upholstery and refurbishing business. He refurbishes furniture, motor vehicles, planes and boats. And the current, uh, business is known as Skin and Bones. I have attached to my memorandum some exhibits. Uh, the first is, I just attached the deeds so that you could see the transfer of title, uh, property right through the current owner, Mr. Chase. In addition, I had come across some exhibits, uh, some letters from previous administrations of the city of Marlborough, determining that the past uses of the property were in fact pre-existing grandfathered uses and in essence, giving permission to continue that use indefinitely. If you've had a chance to look at them, the first exhibit was from January of 1978, from then building inspector John Byrne. And Mr. Byrne wrote a letter to Robert Rennie, who was Sandra Austin's father, uh, telling him that his use was permitted and the present use would be considered conforming. And it meant that the present occupation could be continued in, in that district. Then in 1980, the then city solicitor Kusen Hadad wrote a letter to Mr. Rennie as he was in the process of selling the building to Victor McAdams, um, telling him that since his business had been in that location since, uh, in his letter, he says 1932, that it could continue as a non-conforming business. And made note in his letter that he or his successor could continue to operate a blacksmith welding and fence shop for an indefinite period. Just as a background note, there is some reference to this property as being 67 Lincoln Street. And at some point it was changed to 75 Lincoln Street. The third letter that we had from previous administrations was in 1986. And again, the then building commissioner Jonathan Byrne wrote a letter to, um, Mark Evangelist, the owner of Gemini Sign, indicating that he also could use the property as his business endeavorer and noted that it could be changed to a use which is comparable to the present use as long as it was not substantially more non-conforming or more detrimental to the neighborhood. Mr. Evangelist proposes to use this property for his residential roofing business. His, he has no intention to change the building structure, the outside of the building, the parking lot or the sign structure. Just maybe changing the plate to identify his business if this is approved. Uh, materials for his roofing projects are generally delivered to customers' homes, but there will be some materials stored at the location. It's his intent to store everything inside. Uh, similar to the past uses, there is plenty of room at this business for both his administrative office at one part of the building. And there's a pretty large garage where Mr. Chase currently stores much of his materials. And Mr. Evangelist would do the same, storing everything inside. There's possibility of several vehicles being parked during the day and sometimes overnight. There's also two current residential tenants that live at the property and those tenants would remain. In my memorandum, I did give an overview of how we believe the current, current applicant's proposed use will be very similar to each of the past uses. And I kind of outlined the different ways that Mr. Evangelist's use will be similar to both the blacksmith, Yankee Fence and Gemini Sign. And I made note generally that, you know, supplies and materials are sometimes delivered to the Lincoln Street property and stored there. Uh, in the past, there has been both some light manufacturing and assembly inside the building. Uh, the paved area outside is used for employee parking and occasional customer parking. There was an administrative office at the Lincoln Street property for both the fence company Gemini Sign. Uh, Mr. Chase has his office there. And Mr. Evangelist also proposes to put his administrative office there. We did note that, um, the building inspector, Mr. Cook, had denied the proposed use as it didn't conform to the current code as it is in the residential B district. We do note that he labeled it as a contractor yard. Uh, we believe that was a mistake that is, is not intended to be used as a contractor yard. Uh, I did note that there is no specific definition that I can find anywhere in the Marlborough zoning code of what a contractor yard is. Uh, but generally, I think everybody accepts what, what that would be is, uh, more along the lines of maybe what a, um, landscaper would do by storing mulch and things like that outside. And that is not Mr. Evangelist's intent or his proposed use for that. We believe that the only definition that we can find of a yard in the zoning code really deals only with outside use. We believe that Mr. Evangelist's proposed use is strikingly similar to the past uses and will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. And that this proposed use should be, uh, given the continued grandfather status of a pre-existing non-conforming use. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Chase unless after that short presentation, there's any questions that I can help answer.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. So you said there was another definition of a contractor yard. But in 650-5, it says contractor's yard premises used for the storage of equipment and/or materials for providing contracting services, including but not limited to building construction, heating, plumbing, roofing and expedition. So by the definition, it correctly labeled as a contractor yard.
Um, would that be outside? I, the only one I could find with yard was anything outside. Mr. Evangelist?
It just says premises for the use of storage, doesn't say inside or outside. Just says premises used for the storage of-
I guess my response to that is then the current use also stores all of his materials for refurbishing his, uh, the vehicles, the airplanes and furniture. The previous use Yankee Fence would have also stored their materials for the construction of fences. And the blacksmith shop would have also stored, uh, materials for their blacksmithing business. So with that said, I would think that it may be, uh, entitled to its continued grandfather status since the use has been generally the same. I realize they're different businesses. But the, the use is generally the same since sometime in the early 1900s. Does that answer your question, sir?
I understand. Wait, go move.
I have a question, Attorney Flood. You've mentioned about the tenants that are living in the building and they're on the second floor of the building?
Yes.
And do they have vehicles that are parked on the lot?
I, I believe so, yes.
How many spaces are there available for vehicles to park? Uh, for equipment to come in and load or unload? Any potential materials that would be undertaken in the new venture?
So I think it's a, a multi-part question, but, um, Mr. Chase may be able to answer the number of spaces. Cause I'm not exactly sure of the number, but it's a fairly large paved parking area that has plenty of room, um, for both the two tenants that live there as well as anybody that would use it for the business. Most of Mr. Evangelist's, uh, employees take their vehicles home. So there would be, he anticipates no issue with parking on the property of any kind.
How many employees does he intend to have there? And would they not park their vehicles there when they arrive to start work?
Most of his, uh, vehicles are taken home by their, by the employees. So they will probably take the vehicle from their home to the job sites. But that doesn't mean that there won't be, I don't want to mislead you that there won't be any vehicles. But he only has a few employees. It's a pretty small business and they take their vehicles home.
So there'd be no like secretarial type person or office manager in the building all day?
Right now, Mr. Evangelist does most of his own administrative work. Uh, but there's the possibility of, of, you know, hiring a assistant. I don't want to, that's not a current plan. But I don't want to say that that would never happen.
I have a question.
Yes.
Excuse me, Ralph Lofton. Um, I see in your, your application and your materials that you say that roofing supplies and materials will be delivered to the property and stored inside only. Uh, what about other equipment that's used in the roofing business? Will all of the equipment be stored inside? I'm thinking specifically about long ladders and scaffolding and other kinds of things that are used in the business. Will those items be stored inside?
Yes. There's plenty, this, uh, I'm not sure if you know this building, sir, but there's, um, a good sized garage.
Yeah.
And there's, so there's plenty of room. Mr. Chase, who I, whose picture I see, might be able to answer a few questions regarding the number of spaces and the amount of space inside the building, if it's okay if he speaks.
Yes. Give your name and address, sir.
I want to thank the board very much for allowing this opportunity. The spaces involved at the shop easily accommodate 20 automobiles. I have four spaces that are marked for our tenants. And so because there may be a possibility of them having two cars each. Um, the main shop is quite large. It is 12 foot ceiling high. Um, 25 wide and about 46 deep. And then there's another sub-shop off that. And, um, that is involved, uh, probably 35, 40 feet. And then it would be about another 30 feet deep. And then there's the showroom that I, I call that. And then there's an office next to that. And, uh, that's, that's the way I've used that. If you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions? Any of our virtual board members have any questions? Mr. Chase?
No.
Yeah, I, I just would like to, uh, thank the board first of all for giving me the opportunity to reflect on the history and the future use of this shop. My comments will be brief. And I want to thank Sandra Renee Austin for the recollection of the history of the property that her family occupied since the early 20th century. What was the name of the shop? I asked her. And as Sandra said, Rampy's Blacksmith Shop. As you know, small businesses are rooted within our city and these businesses are rooted for our community. I have had the privilege of doing jobs for our from restoring family air tools that have been hurt in fires, designing sewing services for the Marlborough Fire Department for specialized equipment. And even working on a carriage for Don Landers. The Lincoln Shop is part of that community route. We ask you to see the history and the value of passing this shop on to a low-impact business such as Ted's Roofing as it'll be used for storage of supplies and the base of operations for all his off-site roofing jobs. Chris has laid, well laid out the, uh, long history of the Lincoln Street shop. But our family history and in Marlborough is ours by choice. Our family moved here in 1978 and purchased a home on Berlin Road, which we still live at. 431 Berlin Road in Marlborough, of course. And at that time, Marlborough, I remember had a radio station, W S R O on Curtis Avenue, where they played a song, "We love Marlborough and Marlborough loves you." And the entrance to, from Sudbury to Marlborough on the Boston Post Road. Welcome the residents coming in to Marlborough, country kind of city. For many reasons, we have made Marlborough our home. And I am pleased that its, its city is and has been our home for the past 42 years. I thank you very much and sincerely and respectfully. Thank you for listening and any questions that you may have, I'd be happy to help you with. Uh, most of my work has been pre-World War II transportation. I've done work for the, uh, uh, Foundation, Collins Foundation. Restored a tank for them and some aircraft work. And, uh, we, we've had a wonderful history here. Unfortunately, I'm getting a little bit older and now it's time to move on. And, uh, again, I do appreciate you really listening to the history of the shop. And, uh, any questions I may answer, uh, I'm open to. So thank you for listening.
Quick question. Do you have any financial interest in this shop right now?
Um, what, what do you mean by financial interest?
Well, are you a proud owner of it or do you own the property?
No, I, I was able to, uh, write a check for it when I purchased it in 2005. So I discharged my obligation at the moment, uh, when we write a check for that. So the building is in our, we have a family trust and the building is in that trust.
But in essence, sir, Mr. Chase is both the owner of the business and of the building currently.
In the building?
And the building as well, yes.
Is he, Mr. Flood, does he own the building as well?
Yes, he does, sir. Mr. Chase Pope owns the building. He technically owns it in a trust. But he's the, the trust, he's the, uh, the beneficiary of that trust and he owns and runs the business skin and bones.
And I apologize for the name. The skin was for the leather upholstery and the bones was for the woodworking. I do, uh, I build pre-World War II car bodies and aircraft. And it's very difficult to describe, but if you look at an antcar, um, especially from the 30s, you notice that they look like metal cars of today, but indeed they have a wooden skeleton below them. So if you were to X-ray them, they would look like a human skeleton per se. And, uh, I have stored large lumber. I, you know, I, I buy that maple, ash, oak and the like. And, uh, we go ahead and construct the body for them. I work for about, oh, probably 15 or 30 people per year. And it depends on the, the gravity of the job and, uh, what's involved.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Flood, you have anyone else going to speak?
Um, unless you have any questions for Mr. Evangelist, there's no one in schedule to speak.
Evangelist is there?
He is there. I can't see him right now, but I know he's there.
You have any comments, Mr. Evangelist?
Hi, I'm here now. Sorry, sir. Um, no, I have not, I, I think Chris basically, uh, touched on, you know, and Mr. Chase. Um, you know, I have a smaller business based out of Marlborough. I've worked in Marlborough my whole life. And I just really wanted to, you know, been looking for a while to have a spot to put my, uh, you know, my nails and my drip edge and whatnot. Uh, you know, in a good spot in a building. Um, I have three employees. They take home their vehicles. And, you know, basically a spot to type estimates, uh, you know, and to be within the city. And, you know, I'd want the board to know that, you know, there'll be nothing outside besides a couple of vehicles. Uh, the tenants that have marked spots there now. So, you know, whatever's outside, if I have a ladder or anything will be inside the building. The, the building's quite large. Uh, and I'll be able to fit everything in there being that I have a smaller company within the city.
I think from the information we had, you had been the previous owner of the property when you went to Gemini Sign?
No, sir, that's, um, same last name, but it's not, it's not this Mr. Evangelist.
Oh, okay.
So it was a-
Brother?
Not, not a brother. I think it's, it might be a, a cousin.
Uh, it's an uncle.
Uncle, uncle, sorry. But no connection.
Any other questions?
It's just a coincidence. Same building.
Yes, sir.
Board members?
I'm sorry, sir. Can you repeat?
Any, any questions, Mr. Evangelist, from board members?
Yes.
I have a question. Is your commercial roofing as well as residential or strictly residential?
Uh, yeah, thank you for the question. No, just residential roofing. I'm a basic, uh, roofing, you know, homeowner roofer, couple trucks. Um, the materials get delivered to the job each day and then go to the job and do the job. So if that answers your question, residential.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, this is, uh, Tom Pope. I have a question. Uh, will vehicles have, uh, ladders on them? And if so, will the vehicles be stored inside the garage?
Uh, good question. So right now I have about four vehicles and I have one trailer. It's kind of my fleet. But most of my guys take a truck home at night. My three employees take a truck home. So I think, um, I, at times I could have a truck or a trailer backed into the garage. That garage is, it's a large, uh, ceiling garage. So I could have something in the garage.
But, but nothing, uh, nothing parked outside that would have, uh, ladders or any staging of any sort?
Um, I mean, I have two, I have one truck that I don't use every day that could be in there that has a ladder on top, one ladder on it now. Um, so I don't, I can't say I wouldn't have a truck out there, but I don't have a 30 employees or a big fleet of vehicles. It just basically I drive a couple of different trucks. Um, but none that are, you know, have a bunch of ladders that would be sitting in there all the time. What I have for vehicles I use. If that answers the question.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you very much, sir.
Okay, uh, building commissioner is here in the hall with us. Do you have any comments at this time? Just, you guys all like to state my position, okay? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I received the application for use, the change use, and this application is signed by Mr. Theodore Evangelist. And it states his applicant will operate the commercial and residential roofing business. So it's kind of getting a different story here where he just said he wasn't doing commercial. Uh, this is, this is the information I'm basing my decision on to do this. So it's nice having that history of the property. Hearing in the previous letters that were issued by various city officials. Uh, look at the dates of those. In 2007, the city ordinance, zoning ordinance was, um, revised to add in that if an item is not in the table of use, it will be prohibited. That was not there before. And so now it is. So any of these letters stating that a use that was there before, uh, I think is null and void. Uh, also master law 48 offers protection if a business is in continual operation, that use it will continue. A break of two years, it loses its grandfather status. We also have that in our local ordinance, a break of a non-use or abandonment for two years. Uh, the grandfather going away. Have you seen anything like that happen with this property? No. Well, two years, the two years, it's like the old history of the blacksmith shop.
Yeah.
That has been long gone for over two years. So that use has been abandoned, so that cannot be, um, reactivated. If that blacksmith shop was always in existence, it's protected now. Nothing we can do about it as a firm. Any of these subsequent uses, so, uh, been unopened, say, uh, not in existence for more than two years? The fence company's gone more than two years of all these other uses to be gone. What is there in Mr. Chase's upholstery business? So, uh, not having an item, we gotta look, when a use comes in, I have to look and fit it into a category in the table of use. If I can't fit it into a table, into the table of use, it's not allowed. It's prohibited. So we had, we don't, at that time, we didn't have contractor yards. Right. That was still pending. City council, we now have a contractor's yard that is allowed in the city of Marlborough. But this is also the RV zone, the residential zone, and that would not be allowed in a residential zone.
I have a question for you. Part of the argument is it's a, they're already non-conforming. And then just going to do a little more non-conforming. That's not a zoning variant. That's a special permit, right?
Correct.
So we're not, uh, there's no special permit in front of us, just allowing them to use it as different, as different than its own.
Correct. What's in front of you is my, the denial of overturning to either your firm or just overturn my decision that this is the roofing.
So it really has nothing to do with pre-nonconforming use. They just want to use the building for something that zoning- They just want to use the building for something that zoning doesn't allow, provide a special permit.
Looking for use, they're basically, correct, right?
We're actually seeking to have a continued grandfather status of a business use that is proposed to be not more conforming than the past use, and very similar to each of the past uses. So with that said, we believe that this property should be granted its continued non-conforming use status. It's a business, it's gonna have materials stored inside similar to the current business and the previous businesses. There'll be an administrative office, there'll be work offsite, all the things that I outlined in the memorandum shows that this continued grandfather status should be granted.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flood. Uh, members of the board, anyone have any more questions on, on the board itself? If not, we can go to questions from the audience.
Now, I, this is Tom Pope, I have a question.
Go ahead, Tom.
So, uh, there will be no light manufacturing as there is there now, is that correct?
Manufacturing, no.
Light manu...
They get, they get supplies and bring them to customer locations and assemble the roofs or re-roof the bit, at the customer locations.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pope?
Yes.
No foot traffic at this facility dur, you know, as, uh, businesses in the past would have retail customers coming through, throughout the day. I'll have none of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, could now, could we hear from any audience members? Uh, if you, I see there's a couple on the screen here. Mr. Chang, is it? Yeah, will you please give me a name and address?
Hi, I'm Corey Chang, here with my wife Magali Chang. We are the owners of 80 Lincoln Street. We're also here with, uh, Mr. San Juan Rojas, which, who is the, uh, owner of 74 Lincoln Street. These two properties are across from 75 Lincoln Street. Um, thank you so much, members of the board, um, for hearing us. Um, uh, we, uh, we're not roofing experts, um, we're new at the game here to, um, code, uh, in Marlboro, but we did want to raise some concerns. Um, uh, we are, first, we want to say that we're very well aware of the, the, the good business reputation, Mr. Evangelist, and, and Chris has made that very clear in his memorandum. Uh, and at the same time, we do have some concerns. Uh, we, uh, submitted a, uh, a list of our concerns, another memorandum, I suppose, to, uh, Mrs. Brown. Mrs. Brown, may I ask, could you keep that?
Oh, the board members have your, uh, letters of concern, yeah. And, uh, one of the board members will read the cover letter of it?
Okay, uh, then I'll, I'll spare the board's time in, in, in being brief about our concerns then. Um, we're, we're primarily concerned about safety. Uh, Mr. Rojas has lived, um, at 74 Lincoln Street for twenty years, and, uh, we know the neighborhood pretty well. We're primarily concerned with safety here, um, as something that would be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood should the use be changed. Uh, there was an accident, actually, um, ten years ago, uh, which involved two passenger cars, which occurred directly across from 75 Lincoln Street, um, in front of Mr. Rojas's house at 74 Lincoln Street. Um, these two cars basically got into a collision, and one of them ended up, uh, damaging a retaining wall right in front of the living room, first floor living room of, uh, 74 Lincoln Street. And so, you know, we claim that, that things are already pretty dangerous, uh, across from, uh, 74 Lincoln Street, uh, at 75 Lincoln Street.
Uh, to, to make it clear, one of those cars actually was coming out of 75, uh, 75 Lincoln Streets, or, or that is what we recollect from back in the day, coming out of there. And given the fact that it's such a, uh, traffic, I mean, Lincoln Street, there's just so much traffic, there's a lot of cars going in and out, and, uh, for the past twenty years, uh, we've known geminisides, we've known skin and bones, they've been wonderful, and I'm sure, Mr. Evangelist, we did the same, but we're just concerned about the traffic of just more and more cars coming in through that area, and specifically, larger vehicles that may be coming in through that area, especially when there's so much already traffic in there. A lot of neighbors, we live all close to each other, there's a lot of kids around too. So that is just one of the, the bigger concerns that we have about another company with larger vehicles, with more instruments coming in and out, uh, of that residential zone.
Uh, and we've, uh, submitted some supporting documents, just, uh, checking with, again, um, the excellent business that Mr. Evangelist already has. Um, he's already said during this meeting that he might have a few more, uh, trucks, perhaps not all the way, all the time at night, we understand that, but we are concerned about the size of the trucks, uh, which we, we think was not disclosed in his application. Um, so we, we're worried about that, we're worried about safety. And, uh, as my wife, uh, Magali said, uh, there are some children that live near in, certainly in one of our properties at 80 Lincoln Street, there are two children downstairs. And I believe one of the bus stops for one of the elementary schools also is very close to that trio of houses, seventy-four, seventy, uh, four, excuse me, seventy-five and eighty Lincoln Street. So we are concerned about safety. Um, we also have some concerns about, um, some potential, potential, um, site pollution and, and potential noise pollution. Again, um, Chris and, um, Ted have made it, it clear that they intend to be, you know, good neighbors and, and, um, uh, and keep things neat. But we can't help but think that in the reality of a roofing business, which, again, we are not experts in, but the reality, um, in a roofing business is, is that, um, there needs to be action. It's, there needs to be things that lie out, that are convenient for, for, um, Ted to do his work, uh, well. And so, we are concerned that, in the reality of, of operating this business across from, um, um, our properties, that, uh, there could be some site pollution. Uh, it is a smaller lot than, than, um, you know, others, uh, that, that have, we believe, roofing businesses. Um, and we're also concerned about noise pollution as well. Again, uh, the vehicles are, are a concern to us, the size of them and the frequency of their comings and goings. So, um, uh, these are our concerns, we've outlined those in, um, our document memorandum to you. Um, we're happy to, you know, provide additional support, support to, to, to support our, our, our request to have the, uh, the board uphold its denial. So, um, unless, uh, my wife has anything more to add, or, uh, Mr. Rojas has anything to add, we yield, as they say.
Do you have any further questions, uh, comments, Mrs. Chang?
No, no, I am, that's, that's all we wanted to make. I think the, uh, someone's going to read the memorandum into the record, so that's, that's enough.
We thank you.
Board members have any questions of Mr. or Mrs. Chang? No, okay, well, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have any letters or emails that, uh, have come in, Sue?
Well, Tom can read the, uh, cover letter to the, uh, Mrs., Mr. and Mrs. Changs.
Dear members of the Marlboro Zoning Board of Appeals, we are ready to respectfully request that the ZBA uphold its denial for change of use at 75 Lincoln Street. Our family has lived at 74 Lincoln Street for twenty years, and we also own 80 Lincoln Street. Both properties are directly across the street from 75 Lincoln Street, and we are very familiar with the neighborhood. In order to allow a change to a property pre-existing non-conforming use, the city must determine that expansion or alteration of a non-conforming use or structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use, Section 650 dash 12B. We are concerned that a roofing business at 75 Lincoln Street will be substantially and negatively impact neighborhood's safety and its sites and noise pollution.
I think that's all you're gonna have to read from now.
There are exhibits, um, A, A through D. There's one on insurance, um, some photos of, um,
View connection.
So, I think that's for record.
Okay, thank you. And is that it, Sue, was that the only letter that we had from anybody?
Uh huh, yep.
Okay, anyone speaking in favor of the petition, if you haven't spoken previously? Okay. Anyone speaking in opposition to the petition, if you haven't spoken previously? No one waiting in the background anywhere, huh?
Doesn't look like it.
Members of the board? This is Chris Flood, may I, may I speak?
No, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Evangelist did want to have a brief comment in response to the, the neighbor's concerns. Would that be okay if he voiced that?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, board, thanks, Chris. I just wanted to speak out, uh, just say hello to, 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 the two neighbors, and just basically, in response to them, as if I was living in the neighborhood myself, I'd have, you know, concerns with a new business coming in across the street. Um, so I did want to say was, I, I drive a Toyota Tacoma, or one of my trucks, my estimating truck, which is a small little Toyota truck. I have a Ford, uh, F-350 truck, uh, one-ton truck, because it has a plow on it. And I have, uh, one box truck, uh, that's, uh, a one-ton box truck that, you know, an irrigation guy or a plumbing guy would use. So those are the three vehicles I have. It's a small residential company, I don't have a large company. Not a lot of trucks, not a lot of people. I think that what, with the board and with myself kind of coming in here, that I'd be less detriment than other business that could come in. I have no foot traffic, um, I'm, would be in there, you know, typing estimates. I would have a delivery maybe once every two weeks that would come in there in a typical box truck that you would see, uh, you know, it, it would bring in some materials that would back inside. But during the day, there would be no vehicles in and out. I think I would have less traffic and less vehicles than Mr. Chase has now at the property. Um, you know, I think I would do a great job for the, you know, the, the road, the, the neighbors, the community have a cleanup, a good cleanup with flowers and nice mulch, you know, making the property, you look presentable out front. Um, I've always taken pride in, you know, in my properties, in the yards, you know, vehicles and whatnot. There won't be any, you know, people hanging around over there, nothing, you know, no music, no things that you could kind of think of when thinking of, you know, basically having a, a yard over there, you know. Basically, inside building, using the office to do paperwork. Um, and, you know, with total respect, um, you know, with the neighborhood, just as, you know, Henry Emon does up the street, it's Henry's been there fixing cars for years, where I go up and, you know, get the cars. So a similar situation, uh, for me, um, I think, I just want to, you know, let you know that I'm not a, uh, we can go in as a bad neighbor or, you know, making problems for anybody, or any, there's no big trucks in and out, there's no late-time people there. We, you know, basically work, I go to the job at a residential house at seven in the morning, I would go back to the shop during the day, pro, you know, throughout the day, in and out, getting paperwork, maybe getting some materials myself, and then that's it. You know, we don't, we wouldn't be there late at night, and we wouldn't be there at five or six in the morning. If that answers any questions.
Do you have any comment on that, Mr. Chang, or Mrs. Chang?
No, I, I wanted to say thank you, Ted, for addressing that. I, I think definitely that helped us and, and eased some of the concerns that we have. As you know, it is a little scary sometimes to know, to have new neighbors coming in, especially because we have kids, we have, uh, elderly people around the neighborhood. So we do appreciate that you make those comments.
I would be the neighbor that would probably plow the end of your driveway during a storm.
Actually, Ted, if it's okay with the board, can I, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Uh, at the risk of sounding like a snoopa, we, we, we did want to learn a little bit more about your existing business, and so we went to your website, and, um, we did, we did take a look at, again, the excellent work that you're known for, and some of the photos there. And we did see some, you know, large, um, vehicles there, and I think that's a, a large part of what our concern is. Um, there was like, maybe like a, like a dumpster, some large trucks and, and, you know, larger trucks than the F-150, I think they...
Yeah, yeah, I have one dump truck. It's used, you dropped the job. I have one dump truck, but it's a Ford, it's not like, um, it's not a, like a big dump truck, like a dirt dump truck. It's a, you know, it's a, a one, you know, basically a Ford, it looks like a regular pickup truck with a dump bed, like a landscape truck. So it's not a big dump truck, it's not a loud diesel truck, you know what I mean? So I do have one of those.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think a lot of our concerns stem from, from that. Um, I, I agree with my wife, so thank you so much for clarifying, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you, folks. Uh, for the board members, are there any board members that have any more questions of any of the participants in the previous discussions, from the applicant, his representatives? If not, I'd like to close that public portion of the...
I'll just make a...
Yes, Jeff?
Your free call, Commissioner, I just want to state that the question in front of you, is this proposed use in the table uses? If it's not in the table uses, it's prohibited. The whole talk about whether it's less detrimental change, that's for a special permit process. What's in front of us is my letter saying that this use is not allowed in the table uses.
All right, thank you for that clarification again.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, uh, I'm gonna close, yes.
Mr. Chairman is?
Who is that?
It's Jason Grossfield, City Solicitor.
Who is it?
Jason.
Yes, Jason, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, good, good evening, everybody. Um, I just wanted to offer a couple of thoughts in terms of the law that's before you, as, as the Building Commissioner just mentioned. You know, what the appeal that you have before you is very specific to whether this proposed use, proposed use qualifies as a pre-existing non-conforming use that should be continued indefinitely. And, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a wide body of case law that deals with this issue. And so a couple of thoughts I wanted to mention to the board. One, of course, it's the, it's the appellant's burden to prove that the use today is a lawful pre-existing non-conforming use. Um, and that's for the appellant to show that the current, uh, upholstery refurbishing business is actually lawful pre-existing non-conforming use. And then, if there's going to be a substantial change in that use, then the applicant has to comply with zoning as it exists today, which, as the Building Commissioner mentioned, if this proposed use is a contractor yard use, it's not allowed in this district. And so there's a three-part test that the board can apply to determine whether this proposed use is a change, uh, a substantial change in use. And the three-part test is, is would the new use reflect the nature and purpose of a current non-conforming use? Is there a difference in the quality or character, uh, from the new use to the current use? And would the resulting new use be different in kind and effect on the neighborhood? And those are three tests that the board can apply, and I can tell you, there's a wide variety of examples out there. Um, and if any of those tests are tripped by this change in use, then this use is not going to be allowed in this district. And there's a variety of examples of, of changes that have tripped those uses, you know, changing from a home builder's fixing yard to a ray-mix concrete supply center, that's tripped the use, uh, changing from a furniture sales with trucking to a business that predominantly does freight hauling, changing from a new and used car truck dealership to a place where just vehicles are serviced, uh, changes that result in traffic, noise, um, more adverse impacts that are different in kind. Those are all, those are a few examples, there's many more. Um, but those are the, the sort of legal tests that, that I'd advise the board to consider in terms of this issue.
Uh, Jason, this is Ralph Lofton, would you state that, uh, those three, excuse me, those three items again, especially the first one, but go through the three again, if you wish.
Sure, and, and I will tell you upfront, the, the, number one and number two that I'm gonna mention are going to sound very similar, and the courts apply them as almost, you know, they are sort of very similar. But the first one is whether the resulting use, uh, reflects the nature and purpose of the current non-conforming use when the zoning laws took effect. So you, so on that one, you're looking at whether these proposed changes, are those ordinarily and reasonable changes adapted to the original use? So, you know, the board would have to, if the, if the answer to that is no, then that test is tripped, and you have to comply with current zoning, you're gonna lose that protection. The second test is, is there a difference in quality or character and degree between these two uses? It's a similar test to the first test. Um, but that's the example where, I think I mentioned to you, changing from a new and used... But that's the example where, I think I mentioned to you, changing from a new and used truck dealership in which some service work is done, to a place where you just do service work, that trips that, that kind of test because it's different in character. The third test is, is the resulting use different in kind and its effect on the neighborhood? And that test involves, is there an increase in the severity of the adverse aspects of the use? That's going to trigger that test, and the kinds of things we're talking about there are noise, traffic, hours of operation. So those are the three, the three, it's called the powers test, and those are the three, three pieces to it.
If I can respond, Board. Part of the memorandum that I submitted goes through the similarities of Mr. Evangelist's business with the previous businesses. And I would say that the proposed use is very similar to the previous uses, and is not different substantially in quality or character or kind. It's a business that's run during the day, there's an administrative office, there's materials that are stored and used primarily customer sites. The roofing was used at customer sites, the fence, Yankee Fence built the fences out at customer sites. So the resulting use is similar, excuse me, the current proposed use is very similar to the previous uses. And I think if you look at the memorandum I submitted, it just outlines point by point how they're so similar. We think that this will clearly be not more detrimental to the neighborhood than any of the past business uses.
Yeah, members of the board, do you want to have any further discussion or closing the public portion of the hearing?
I'd like to ask, Bob Levine. This is partially to Jason. It seems to me that there are two separate issues here. One is the pre-existing non-conforming use issue, which is pretty much all of the material we were given describes that. The second, and that requires a special permit. The second one is, do we allow this use of the property in an area that's not zoned for that use? And maybe there's a fine line, but I don't see how they're, how they combine into only one issue before us. Is that, is that clear enough?
Jason, are you there?
Yes, yeah, through the chair, so I think you're hitting on the issues that are out here. And I think sitting here today, all, all that the, right, all the appellant is asking the board to determine is flip the building inspector's decision and say that this proposed use is pre-existing non-conforming use, which can be done forever, right? And the, the issue that is before the, is that somebody, you know, if their change from the use that they have today is different, substantially different, based on those three tests, then they have to comply with the current zoning. And so to me, that sort of cuts to, you know, cuts to the chase because they can't, the new use can't comply with current zoning, it's not permitted in that district. If the board agrees it's a contractor's yard use, it's prohibited.
Yeah, that's, that's what I thought, that's what I thought. And since the definition of contractor's yard includes storing roofing materials, that's what I'm stuck.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
Close the hearing or?
I hear a motion to close.
Public hearing.
Public hearing?
Are those in favor of closing the public hearing, the public portion of the hearing? Chair will call a roll, Rob Levine?
Rob Levine, yes.
Tom?
Tom Golden, yes.
Ralph Lofton?
Ralph Lofton, yes.
Tom Pope?
Tom Pope, yes.
Paul Judd, yes. So the matter now, just before this board, do we have any further discussions or any motions? Anybody want to close the actual public hearing? So the public portion of the hearing, we just did a roll call vote, but we could still be discussing things on our own, or she want to just be satisfied with what we've heard and have a chance to raise questions about, and then close the public hearing by itself? With the pleasure of the board.
Well, to me, we spent an awful lot of time in the last two years in this contractor yard business, and finally came up with a definition of it, and the city council massaged it and passed it. That's the law we have in front of us now. So asking to, you know, businesses go in one place, contractor's yards go in one place, and residential goes in this place, and that's the whole purpose of the zone. So to me, I don't see anything special here that requires a zoning variance. We have any hardships and the things that we have to look at for a zoning appeal. So just, just change, just wanting to run this business in a non-zoned area, and we have your ownership to justify that.
Okay, I've got a couple of comments that I'd like to make too, because when I first read all the documents that were presented to us, I was impressed initially with the fact that there had been previous administrations that allowed a continuation of the non-conforming use for this property. One, I think, was from a building commissioner, another one from the city solicitor. And it really bothered my mind to see that occur and have this matter before us now, but under a new situation where it felt, it has fallen under the category of the contractor's yard. The definition of that contractor's yard does specifically talk about the roofing. And that is, in my opinion, a change in the use of that property, and probably justifies the building commission having denied it. So that is my, my comments, and I would listen to other members of the board that may wish to say, say something about this matter before we ask for a vote.
This is Tom Golden.
Tom Golden.
I think Mr. Evangelist is not looking, I don't think his business is a contractor yard per se. Contractor yards is outdoor, mostly outdoor storage for plows, trailers with bobcats on them.
Trucks, yeah.
Trucks, dumpsters, that type of thing. His use is more strictly a business use, where everything's going to be stored inside. Maybe a couple of trucks now and then outside, and an office for doing paperwork. So I would, I would be in favor of denying the building inspector's denial, because his use is more of a business, it's not a contractor. And the zoning, say that building was turned into an apartment, added two units, three units. The truck would have 12 cars in there, 16 cars in there, and it's been a non-conforming business since day one, and this business is less non-conforming than what's previously been in there, so. I'd be in favor of just leaving it as is.
This is Ralph Lofton. I'm, I'm sort of on the fence with this. Part of, part of me, I, I don't see any fundamental difference between the business that's operating there today and the business that's being proposed. The, the, the product that's being delivered is different, but in terms of the process of delivering that product, as far as the impact on the facility, and, and the nature of the business itself, does not strike me as being all that different. There, there's no substantial material that's going to be stored outside. Everything is going to be stored inside as it was, as it was with, with the previous business, and is its proposed with the current business. There will not be large numbers of vehicles coming and going throughout the day in this proposed business. There, there will not be substantial amounts of any, at least we've been assured that there will be no materials or supplies stored outside. The, there's no foot traffic here. So just in terms of the fundamental nature of the business, there does not seem to be a substantial difference in my mind. And if, in fact, the previous business was grandfathered in as non-conforming, I cannot see that the proposed business improve or increases that non-conformity. And as a matter of fact, I, I don't see that it has substantial, a substantial impact on the neighborhood.
Okay, any other comments from the board members? Tom, you?
My only comment would be, if it's correct, is that the roofing materials, whether it be shingles or rubber, are delivered to the job site and not to 75 Lincoln?
That's what we were told, right?
Yes, right, that is correct.
The, the application says list materials sold or stored at the property. It says shingles and roofing equipment on the application. And the definition of a contractor yard says storing roofing equipment, doesn't say inside or outside. And to Ralph's point, we're not looking at a special permit. We're looking at allowing a use that's not defined for that zone. And that seems to be the only thing in front of us.
Any discussion?
Let me just ask Bob about that. What about the notion that the current use is non-conforming and has been grandfathered in? So aren't we simply considering whether to continue that non-conforming use?
No, I don't think so. That wouldn't be a special permit.
No, I understand, but the, the basis for the building, for Jeffrey's denial seemed to be centered on the idea that this was a new use that was being proposed.
I didn't see that in his denial. I see the denial saying, denied is it does not comply with the table of uses. Doesn't say anything about grandfathering businesses. The use is denied because it does not comply with the table of uses. The table of uses for, the RB clearly says no for contractor's yard.
Yeah, no, that's clear, that's clear.
The definition of a contractor's yard is the storage of roofing material, which is what the application asks for. That's, that's all I see. If it was a special permit for the continuation of an existing non-conforming use, that might be a different thing to consider, then this one would come up also, I suppose. But the only thing in front of us is allowing a use of that, in that location, the RB district, as a contractor yard, which the zoning laws do not allow. And to give it to, to allow an appeal, we're supposed to hear hardships. Otherwise, what's the use? We haven't heard one hardship, and that's what we're supposed to be deciding zoning to build on.
Right.
That's, that's all. I, I understand the existing non-conforming use, and maybe you can say storing building materials is the same as being a blacksmith, maybe. But that's not in front of us, to me. Nothing in this file of papers, that great history, is, is the issue in front of us. The issue in front of us is allowing a use that's not allowed in the residential B district. That's all I see.
So Jason, are you still there? I have a quick question.
Yes, I'm here.
Is it possible if the board was so inclined to vote to deny the denial portion of the building commissioner's letter, but it would then cause this to be basically approved, could the board put conditions of some kind on there? Like hours of operation, you know, where you can't have trucks going in and out before seven in the morning?
Mr. Chairman, no, I, I think you're limited to acting on exactly the requested relief that was in the appeal. And the only thing this appellant has asked this board to determine is whether, is that this new proposed use could be continued indefinitely.
Right, okay, I kind of thought so, but don't ask anyway.
May I, may I make a statement? I know it's no longer the open hearing.
Chair, anyone here, Mr. Flood's final statement?
Thank you very much. I just heard talk about a hardship. It was my understanding that a hardship would be a determining factor if you're seeking a variance, but that is not what is being sought today. So I don't believe that the hardship factor comes into play. So I just don't want to, want to make sure that's not accidentally considered and denied because you didn't hear a hardship.
Our discussions. Chair will entertain a motion from board members.
I move that we uphold the zoning denial based on the fact that this type of business is not allowed in this district, the RB district. And the building commissioner was perfectly right in denying it. Like I said, there's residential areas, there's business areas. Worked for two years about these contractor yard things, and they're going to just keep popping up. So that's why I have my motion to uphold the.
To uphold the denial by the building commissioner. Okay, you've heard the motion, anyone second it?
I second. Ralph Lofton, I second the motion.
Ralph Lofton seconds it. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to uphold the denial letter from the building commissioner to deny the appeal, to deny the, to uphold the denial, the denial of the actual petition. All those in favor, the clerk will call it, I'll call it.
Yes, Rob Levine.
Rob Levine says yes. Tom Golden? Tom Golden says no. Ralph Lofton?
Ralph Lofton says yes.
Tom Pope?
Tom Pope says no.
One, three yes, two no's.
Right. Jason?
Yes.
We just had a vote to uphold the building commissioner's denial on the vote of three to two.
Yes, yes, you've, you voted, the boards acted to uphold the building inspector's denial.
Right, now is that sufficient to close the matter?
Yes.
Three to two vote gives it a jar you vote?
Yes, yes, it takes four votes, four votes to overturn a building inspector's decision.
So it's just in four votes to approve something, huh? Okay. Motion to adjourn. Okay, so this public hearing, we had a motion to close the public hearing to adjourn. Seconded by Tom Golden.
Take a roll call vote to close the public hearing?
We just did, yeah.
You just took a vote.
All right, motion to close the public hearing.
All right. Rob Levine?
Yes.
Tom Golden?
Yes.
Paul Judd's decision?
Yes.
Tom, Ralph Lofton?
Yes.
Tom Pope?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is closed.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn on the table. Golden seconded it. Golden seconded it. All those in favor? Tom Golden? Yes, yes.
Yes.
Robert Levine? Ralph Lofton?
Yes.
Tom Pope?
Yes.
Paul Judd, yes. This committee, this board is adjourned. Thank you very much, gentlemen and lady who's there.
Thanks, Mike. Bye, Mike. Oh, he's off. Okay.
So Monday, seven o'clock, first, 3:39.